Welcome to the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, March 19th, 2014. Could I have the roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
President.
Daniel Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
J.P. Kwasinski.
Here.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Daniel Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
President.
Okay, thank you. If we could all please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Thank you very much. I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of March 5th, 2012. A motion of second for the approval of the minutes of March 5th. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Counselor Ziegler. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Public speak time. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to address the council from something other than what's on the public hearings, please address, come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Marlese Stoddard, 298 Main Street, East Hampton. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Cottage Street Cultural District to announce a very exciting event that's going to be happening in June. On June 14th, that's Saturday, June 14th, we're going to be blocking off a good portion of Cottage Street and hosting a cultural district celebration. This is going to be a celebration and block party of the, you know, diverse culture, food, music, entertainment, performances, demonstrations on Cottage Street, within the Cottage Street Cultural District. It's also going to coincide with the Cottage Street, One Cottage Street Open Studios is also happening concurrently. We're very, very excited about this. As far as we know, this is the first time this has ever happened in East Hampton. We're working very closely with public safety and any committees necessary to make sure that it goes off without a hitch. We've done community outreach already, as some residents are going to be inconvenienced by this. We've gone door-to-door. Every business is involved in this. Every business does have the opportunity to participate in the planning of this event. Our next meeting is tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. And like all city meetings, there is public speak opportunity. They are open to the public, and if anyone has any ideas to share or wants to participate in the conversation, they may do so. That's all, unless there are any questions.
Could you just state the time and place of the meeting again?
Yes, and I didn't mention the time. So, it is Saturday, June 14th, and it is from 11:00 to 6:00 is the festival time. However, the street will be closed one hour prior and one hour later for setup and breakdown. So, the street closed through traffic will be from 10:00 to 7:00.
Sounds great. Thank you very much for the update.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. I guess we've had no communications, elected officials, or correspondence. So, we're out to Mayor Communications, Mayor Katcher.
Good evening. The only thing I would like to add is, I think, if the councilors haven't heard yet, that your, our city clerk and your clerk is expecting to be back in the office on Monday. So, that's excellent news. We're all glad to have her back. And I want to thank Mary Ann Giza for taking care of the office on her own for the time of Barbara's absence. And that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you very much. So, we have time to move on then to rules and committees, rules and government relations. Counselor Rist.
No report this evening.
Okay. Going to use my presidential prerogative and skip finances because it's, they have a lengthy, and move on before the public hearing. So, we'll move to public safety. Counselor Hayes.
We met just this past Monday to talk about these Highland Ave., North Hampton stoplight concerns were brought to us, so we'd like to move that to public safety.
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
So, make a motion.
I don't think it needs a public hearing.
No, actually, the stoplight was just going to be a letter we're going to write.
We're going to write a letter.
The public hearing would be the Streets, Autumn, and Circle on Autumn Drive. So, yeah, I'll take this for you, Counselor Hayes. So, I would make a motion to set a public hearing for April 16th. Am I correct?
Yep, April 16th at 6:15.
To discuss Willow Circle and Autumn Drive, public hearing. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor?
Counselor Hayes, I'm confused. The Highland Ave. and North Hampton Street stoplight concerns?
Right.
You're bringing that out of committee, and are you making a recommendation? That's what I don't understand.
Going to make a report, yeah.
We're going to make a report on it.
Not, not tonight.
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, it just came out.
Okay, and then, let me see. You, there's another meeting scheduled, right? Correct? What date is that?
That's the 4/16.
That's the public hearing, but isn't there April 10th? Isn't that a public safety meeting?
I don't think we scheduled the meeting. We were going to schedule it.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. April 10th.
April 10th.
April 10th.
We did schedule it.
6:00 p.m. public, public safety. And the topics will be the Kingsbury Way, Beavry Drive, Birchwood, as well as we'll be discussing the Highland Ave., North Hampton Street stoplight concerns.
We're also going to be discussing the protocol and procedures for street acceptance.
Right. And then, I believe that you need some extensions. Do you want to make a motion for that, Counselor Hayes?
I do want to make an extension for the two street acceptances here, the Kingsbury Way, Beavry Drive, and Birchwood Drive.
They don't need them.
Yeah, they will. So, a 60-day extension, okay.
Sixty-day extension. It's in the form of a motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And I believe that concludes. Counselor Hayes?
That should conclude, yes.
Okay. Appointments, Counselor Winnie.
Yeah, finance? No. I mean, appointments. Don't give me another job. I have no report except that our next appointment subcommittee meeting will be scheduled for April 2nd, 5:30 in one of the downstairs rooms. Mary Ann? Okay, thank you.
Actually, since we have time, you want to move the one appointment? We can do that now.
Sure, we can do that. Make the motion to move the appointment of, hold on, where did I just put it? Oh, that's right in front of me. Maria Fiat, to Consul on Aging, to Appointment Subcommittee for Review.
Okay. We have a motion of second to move Mayor Marie Fiat's appointment to Consul on Aging, to appointments. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Ordinance, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only report I have tonight is, we are going to have a meeting on April 3rd, which is a Thursday, 5:30 p.m. in one of the downstairs rooms, as we get assigned to it.
Okay.
That concludes.
Okay, thank you. And property, Counselor Ziegler.
We are also scheduling a property meeting on Thursday, April 3rd, at 6 o'clock in one of the downstairs rooms. And in the form of a motion, I would also like to request a 90-day extension for the request or authorization to dispose of the Parsons Street School property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for 90-day extension for the Parsons School Street property. Any additional discussions? Actually, I do have one comment. I know some people on the council have mentioned the possibility of, I know it was done once before, but access to the school so the councilors can see the school again. So, maybe at some time in your, for future meetings, you can arrange some kind of additional...
Right, that was discussed at the last meeting that we had, and we were going to work with Jessica Allen to set that up.
Okay, thank you very much. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. We're just climbing through time here. New Business, Counselor Hagan, want to add to your floor?
We have three new supplemental appropriations under New Business, and I'll read all three of the supplemental appropriations and then make a motion to have them all moved to Finance. The first one is dated March 11th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $28,000. It is to be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings in that amount, $28,000, appropriated to water capital purchase, $28,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund the capital purchase of a four-by-two pickup truck for the water department. The next supplemental appropriation is also dated March 11th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested, $75,000, to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings in that amount, $75,000, and appropriated to capital, excuse me, water capital purchase, amount $75,000. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund the capital purchase for meter replacements. And the third supplemental appropriation in New Business is dated March 11th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $55,000, and it's appropriated from free cash, $55,000, appropriated to Veterans Benefits, $55,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide funds for a shortfall in the veterans' assistance. I would make the following motion, that we move those three supplemental appropriations to the Finance Subcommittee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to submit the previous, read out supplemental appropriations to Finance. Any additional discussions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
I didn't see a couple of public hearings.
Okay, so why don't you do that for us? We have five minutes.
I'm going to say, too, I'd like to make a motion to set the following public hearing for a supplemental appropriation of $48,300 from retained earnings to stabilization for the April 2nd full City Council meeting.
Okay, that was a formal motion for the...
Formal motion for public hearing.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I'd also like to set a public hearing in the form of a motion for the following: $185,000 to fund an arbitrated fire contract.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second for the $185,000 to fund the arbitrated fire contract. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And is that everything for the moment?
We have time. Do you want to do the Pepet School, the school thing?
We're going to. It's just, it's just their lengthy, so Joe didn't know if it would run into public. It's going to run into public.
We'll take a three-minute recess, because we legally need to start the public hearings at 6:15. Public hearings?
Second.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
That's one way to do it. Okay, we have a motion of second to open public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Public hearings are open. Counselor Hagan, I believe you lead off tonight.
Okay, the first public hearing tonight is on interdepartmental transfer, and I'll do a second reading on that item. It's dated January 27th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $4,800, and it's to be transferred from the reserve fund in that amount, $4,800, and transferred to the fire vehicle repair, $4,800. And it would be used for the following purpose: to provide repairs to engines one and two, and also, I believe, ladder one. I know the fire chief's here, and he can speak on it. It was approved by the Subcommittee 2-0, and I know our fire vehicles are all having a little bit of problem, but these are pump leaks, which, before the public, if I could have the fire chief explain?
Chief Mott, if you'd like to fill us in, please.
Good evening, David Mott, our fire chief. The first request you have before you tonight from me, the $4,800, is to repair both engines and a minor repair on the ladder. Every year, we're required to get any vehicle that pumps water tested to make sure it can pump what it's rated at. This year, when the company come, came and did it, both engines had vacuum leaks, which prohibits the truck from drawing water from a source other than fire hydrants. So, if there's a large fire in any of the mills, and we were required to draft water from one of the ponds, chances are that one or both trucks may not be able to do it to their full capacity, because they have vacuum leaks and the pump operates on vacuum. The sad part is, right now, along with the other request, I don't have a single vehicle in my fleet that is 100% in service. The fleet is aging. We've been doing Band-Aids, preventative maintenance. We haven't done routine maintenance in the five years I've been chief. If it wasn't for the DPW mechanics, we probably would have had to do an emergency fund transfer to get trucks last week. One of the two ambulances we had had a brake issue. Luckily, the DPW mechanics were able to repair it and put it back in service. And yesterday, for approximately four hours, five hours, we were down to one engine in the city, because the mechanics were fixing a broken suspension part on one of the engines. We've hit the tipping point. The preventative maintenance program that didn't exist is starting to come back and haunt us. That's why these requests are there. The ladder truck, every year, has to go out and get the ladder tested by a neutral third-party. When it went out this year, they found a couple problems. One of them is on this appropriation. It was a minor air leak. The other one is in the second appropriation. But both pumpers and the engine are at a point where they need costly repairs. And when I say every vehicle in the fleet, that includes my car. I have limited heat in my car. The fire prevention officer's vehicle has no heat, which this winter was not fun. I'm trying to do inspections, so we've hit critical mass where the repairs need to get made. And these aren't even, the request before you isn't for preventative. It's to fix things that are broken now. And it worries me that I don't have a single vehicle in a fleet that's 100% in service. Those of you that have been at council a long time know that I'm normally back here looking for overtime or for money for coastal medical billing. I've never had to come back for money for vehicle repairs before. My budget for fire is $7,000 a year to repair vehicles. That's over $3 million worth of rolling stock, and I get $7,000 a year to repair it. Every other year, it's worked. This year, the failed, mechanical failures and breakdowns have far exceeded what my budget can carry. That's why you have that request.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions for chief? He might want to stay up there just for a moment. Counselor Hagan, you'd like to?
No, I think I'm set with the chief on this one. I have another one. I don't know if there's anyone else from the public who wants to speak to this issue.
Please, come to the podium, please, and state your...
If I do had to come up here, I wouldn't have said that. Right. My name is Jim Valencourt. I live at 17 Summer Street in East Hampton. Just my opinion, but I think it's absolutely absurd that there isn't a standard budget for maintenance on the fire equipment. That's ridiculous. It puts firefighters at a tremendous safety issue, not to mention malfunctioning during a fire just isn't acceptable. So, how come we don't have that? That's all.
Thank you. Counselor, I mean, Counselor, Mayor Katcher, please. Yeah, thank you.
I'd be happy to answer that one. Right now is budget time, and it is probably the saddest sight I've seen in many, many years. I think anybody that, the councilors that have been here for a while, and all of the city employees realize what difficult, difficult times these are. The cuts that we have been dealing with for the state for probably 10 years now, we're all tired of them, we're sick of them. There's mandate after mandate, then it comes with no funding. You cannot call us level-funded when we're funded with 2008, 2004 figures. It is not level-funded at all. That is operating at a huge loss every year. I think the number-one way to explain this is, we are, Band-Aids is probably the best way to put it on our equipment. There is, these are our things that we should be maintaining. They would be great capital projects, maintaining our fleet, updating our fleet. This year, at this point in time, right now, I probably have about $200,000 left to use for capital projects with a $13 million worth of requests. I think that probably answers about the rotation of vehicles, fire trucks, all our fleet. There just are no funds. It's a very sad, very sad state of affairs. Everybody is looking for money. All our departments need it sorely, desperately. The only ones that have actually looking for increases in their budgets are the school department. Every, every other department doesn't even look for what their needs are. They don't even look for level services. They are begging for level-funded. It's, it's very difficult right now. So, we're all in this together. There is nothing we can do other than, you know, we're trying to avoid layoffs at this point in time and spending freezes, but pretty much that's where we're at. Does that answer your question, Jim?
Thank you. So, again, if there's anyone up from the public who would like to comment on the appropriation for the repairs, please come to the podium. I'm not seeing any. Counselor Hagan?
Sure, I'll make the following motion, that the full City Council approve the following interdepartmental transfer, the amount of $4,800, and it be transferred from the reserve fund and placed in the fire vehicle repair fund in that amount, $4,800, to provide funding repairs to Engine 1, 2, and Ladder 1.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second for the interdepartmental transfer of $48,4,800. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Counselor Hagan?
Our second public hearing tonight is also an interdepartmental transfer, and I'll do a second reading. It's dated January 27th. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $15,000, and it's to be transferred from the reserve fund in that amount, $15,000, and transferred to the following: Personnel, Professional Services, $10,000, and Negotiator, Professional Services, $5,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide funds for an anticipated shortfall in mediation and arbitration. I guess either the mayor or finance director could speak a little to this, but I believe it's a result of some of the arbitrations that have gone on, and also services that are provided to us for injured firefighters and police under 111F retirements. Correct?
Right. And as you know, the Director of Personnel isn't here tonight, so I'm happy to answer any questions that the councilors might have. Getting back into our budgetary problems, you'll also know that we have union contracts that are three years out of contract. We have the fire department as, is one of the transfers that, you know, is heading to the councilors. Their contract was three years out of contract. That involves a lot of, a lot, that involves mediation. Obviously, you know, it went to arbitration, so a lot of legal, a lot of legal services involved in that. Our police contract was two years out of contract. We're also in the process of negotiating, as of July 1st, with our firefighters again, our two DPW units, and so that's where the shortages are. I think that pretty much explains it, but if you have any questions?
Counselor Rist?
I know you probably don't have the figure in your head, or neither does Finance Director Zwazki, but I would like to know, come Monday's meeting, where we're going to discuss the appropriation for the fire contract, how much specifically the cost of legal services, whether they be city attorney or labor negotiations, cost in negotiating this particular contract as an example of what it costs the city?
Sure.
The last three years. I don't know what the costs are, but I think I'd like to know that.
Right.
So, if you could, if you have that figure, fine, but I didn't expect you to.
Yeah, and normally, I think that would just be the labor attorneys on that.
Whatever.
And sure, that'd be great, try to get that for you for Monday.
So, Monday would be great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions for Mayor Katcher? No, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to come to the podium and comment on this appropriation? Good, now I'm being seen. Counselor Hagan?
I'll make the following motion, that the City Council approve this interdepartmental transfer as follows. The amount requested, $15,000, to be transferred from the reserve fund and transferred to Professional Services in the amount of $10,000, and Negotiator, Professional Services, the amount of $5,000.
Is there a second?
And, excuse me, for, to fund anticipated shortfall for mediation and arbitration.
Okay, a motion of second for the transfer of $15,000 from Reserve Fund to Personal Professional Services. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
The third public hearing tonight is a supplemental appropriation, and I'll read, do a second reading on that. It's a supplemental appropriation dated February 26, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $7,900, and it's to be appropriated from free cash in that amount, $7,900, and appropriated to the following: Fire General Office Supply Expense, $400; Fire Repairs to Vehicle Expense, $3,800; Ambulance Repairs to Vehicle Expense, $200; and Ambulance Medical Supplies in the amount of $3,500. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund repairs to Engine 2, Ladder 1, Ambulance 1, and medical supplies for purchase of two computers. This was, appropriation was approved 3-0 by the Subcommittee, and Chief Mott did break down for us what the dollar figures are for each of those items, but as long as the chief's here, I'll let him explain it to us.
So, I'll start with the easy one, the two computers. We have 10 PCs in the fire department, and about two or three years ago, the IT department submitted, on our behalf, a capital project to replace all those PCs. Unfortunately, it wasn't funded. All 10 of my PCs were all Windows XP machines. Now, I'm not a computer guru, but Barry Small told me that that's a bad thing. They are no longer supported by Microsoft after, I believe it's April 8th, which means there's no more security. So, he does not want Microsoft XP machines on our network, because they'll be prone to attack and viruses. So, I have two machines left that are not upgradable to Windows 7 or 8. They're Windows XP. Therefore, after March 8th, or, excuse me, April 8th, they become a severe risk to the city's server and network. The $3,000 for medical supplies, due to the rising cost of health care, local hospitals are no longer offering us a one-for-one exchange on expendable items: oxygen masks, IV catheters, IV tubing. Used to be, we came in with a patient and oxygen, the oxygen device stayed with the patient. We took one out of a cabinet, and the hospital billed for it. The hospitals are no longer doing that, less and less items, so we are on our own now to purchase those items. Unfortunately, they decided to do it mid fiscal year for us, mid, you know, a brand-new calendar year, so it put us in a bad spot, budgeting, trying to figure out how much of that we'd use. So, the $3,000 is for the one-time-use medical supplies that are no longer replaced by the hospital. The repairs, Ambulance 1, which is a 2010 chassis that we put a 2010 box on, because we couldn't afford a new ambulance in 2010, recently had a transmission issue, shifting very hard. Transmission was slipping, so the request is a ring and a prayer that it's just to get the system flushed. Our mechanics have drained the transmission fluid, chained the filters. It'll go back to a Ford garage to get the system flushed. We're hoping that's the resolve in lieu of a more expensive transmission replacement. If it is the transmission replacement, hopefully, by next Friday, our new ambulance will be here, and I will be able to park that ambulance till July 1st, instead of coming back here and asking for many more thousands for a new transmission. Also, Engine 2, which is our oldest truck, it's a 1995. The vehicles have portable radios, our thermal imaging cameras, our meters are all on chargers inside the vehicle when it's parked at the station to keep the batteries on. We have a battery conditioner in each truck to make sure the vehicle batteries don't die. About a month and a half ago, the battery conditioner in Engine 2, either the conditioner went to a dead short, or the batteries went to the dead short. But the conditioner went to a high charge sometime during the night. The firefighters came down for an ambulance call. They could smell sulfur. They found it. The batteries in the engine had gotten so hot, the case had actually softened and melted. melted. The rubber matting it sits on melted, and it burnt the printed circuit board up in the charger. The batteries were replaced. That was, luckily, there's enough money in budget, but a new charger is about $1,800. So right now, three to four times a day, they have to go downstairs, start the truck up, let it run for an hour to make sure the batteries are up. And it was even more stressful for me the other day when engine one was down with broken suspension parts, and we were relying on a truck that we hoped start, would start, or we had to jump the batteries. And ladder one was a, the wiring that runs the entire 100-foot length inside of it. When it had its annual inspection up in New York, they found that wire was frayed, which was causing shorts, which normally aren't a big deal, but when you're up 100 feet, what it was doing was causing the basket to keep wanting to level itself. So you'd be sitting there, and the basket would constantly be moving. When you're up 100 feet, that gets kind of hairy. So that repair has to be made on the ladder.
Counselor Hagan.
First, I'll commend the chief for being able to go through all those items without any notes in front of him.
I see him every night in my sleep, trust me.
But just getting back a little bit to the ambulance apply, did that require a fee increase for the ambulances?
Yes. Working with the mayor and coastal medical billing, who does our ambulance billing for us, we asked them for a comparison to neighboring communities, and our ambulance rates were about 40% lower than some of our neighbors. We increased the rates. We are not the most expensive, nor we are the cheapest anymore. The problem with raising the rates, Medicare patients and currently Blue Cross patients, their insurance pays a set rate. No matter what we bill them, insurance only pays so much. Medicare patients, by law, we have to write the remainder off. Medicare rates right now, we are about 60% above Medicare rate, and they're about 70% of our customers. So we're writing more money off. We're bringing the other customers. We're going to be increasing our revenue, not only to offset the cost in supplies, but to try to help the mayor with anticipated budget shortfalls for this coming year and the following fiscal year.
Question, is ladder one, is that the new one?
That's the newest one, correct.
That's the newest one, and even that has having problems. Any other questions for the chief?
No. Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council considering this appropriation? Okay, not seeing any. Counselor Hagan.
I'll make the following motion that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation as follows. The amount requested, $7,900, to be appropriated from free cash and appropriated to the following: fire general office supply, $400; fire repair to vehicle expense, $3,800; ambulance repairs to vehicle expense, $200; and ambulance medical supplies, $3,500. The amount requested would be used for the following purchase: to fund the repairs to engine two, ladder one, ambulance one, medical supplies, and for the purchase of two computers.
Second. A motion of second for the appropriation of $7,900. Any additional discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
That concludes the public hearings for finance.
Finance, okay. Counselor Hayes, I believe we have our...
So the fifth public hearing of tonight?
Yes.
So this is a public hearing for the pole location with Western Mass Electric Company, petition for joint pole location. And I will read their letter. They want to place one jointly owned...
We can, actually, we happen to have a representative from Wemecoh here, so we can have him come up and just discuss the product here. So if you'd mind to come in the podium, just state your name and adjust, that would be great. And give us this little summary of the project, please.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Fuller. I'm a field technician out of the Adleak Western Mass Electric Office. Scope of work that we are looking to perform is to replace a jointly-owned pole currently located on Pleasant Street, on the northerly side of the roadway opposite of where the mills are located. Purpose of this will be to set a taller pole so that we can provide primary power to the new service loop that'll be in place for the East Hampton Mills renovation project. On that pole, we're also going to install the low-grade conductors that will cross Pleasant Street onto Putnam Court on the easterly side, traverse along Putnam Court nearly in its entirety, and cross over to, or, excuse me, private property on the property of the Eastworks business. So that is pretty much everything in the overall scope.
Okay. Was there any questions for Mr. Phil? Counselor Hagan?
Just when this initially was proposed to the Public Safety Committee, it looked like you were going to use a pole as you're coming out of Putnam Court to the left, and now you're using a pole to the right. And I was just curious if, why?
Pole 17 on that print was improperly marked.
I see.
It is, the correct pole number was there, but it was on the wrong location. Those prints have been revised, so...
Right, we got the new one.
The paperwork that'll be recorded is a direct reflection of...
So it wasn't really a change in the project? It was just...
Correct. Just a clerical error, yes.
Thank you.
Any additional discussions from Mr. Phil? No, thank you very much. Jessica, would you like to comment a little about the Pleasant Street project?
Jessica Allen, City Planner. As you know, we're in construction mode right now for the Pleasant Streets Mills project. Construction started on Monday. Trenches are being dug, conduits being laid. The timeline for this project is Gilaher will be onsite doing construction between now and mid-May. They'll be finishing up the work then, and then Wemeco will be following in behind them and laying all the new transmission lines, and their work will be completed by the end of June. The reason that we're sort of fast-paced here is our funding source, Mass Works, is pushing us to expend a certain portion of the money by the end of the fiscal year. So we are on a very aggressive construction timeline right now. We're pushing every day to move as quickly as possible so that Wemeco can get in there and do their work by the end of the fiscal year. I do want to just mention that coming your way, hopefully by the next council meeting, Wemeco is asking for additional easements between Wemeco and the city for the area that there, that the lines will be located and the, all the equipment that's associated with that. So the easement language has been provided by Wemeco. It's currently in the city attorney's hands under review. He's working very closely with the mill owner's attorney because they also have to have separate agreements with Wemeco. Every single mill owner needs to have an own agreement. So it's been a very sort of complicated legal process with a lot of paperwork and a lot of cooks in the kitchen, to say, trying to iron this all out. So my hope is that I will have that filed in, in front of you at the next meeting, and I would encourage you to push that as quickly as possible through the process because those easements need to be in place before Wemeco can put their lines in. And so that needs to happen quickly. So.
Thank you. Any questions? Come to...
Quick question.
Sure.
Some of this construction does affect the bike path, is that correct?
Correct.
And so would it be safe to assume that there's going to be closures on the bike path as well?
It's closed right now, and we're working very closely with our contractors to determine the dates that they'll be closed again. My understanding in my discussions with him is it's going to be closed for a couple of weeks. It'll reopen temporarily, but then it'll be closed again while they're putting in the water line and the electrical.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to follow up on that, if somebody comes down the bike path, is, I assume there's some way they can get around the, without, I mean...
I would suggest that it's closed, for safety reasons. Barbara...
I just meant, Jessica, as you're coming, I assume it's down near, like, where Ferry would be, or around there.
Yes, yes.
As you're coming there, there'll be signage...
Yes.
At some point telling them that it's closed ahead so that they don't have to walk or ride back.
Yep, yep. Their barrier's up.
Okay. Any other questions, first? Thank you very much for your time. If there's anyone else here from the public who would like to comment to the council considering this pole location, please come to the podium and state your name. Okay, not seeing anyone. Okay, Counselor Hayes, I believe we're ready for a motion then.
All right, so I'm going to read this in the form of a motion to place one jointly-owned pole numbered 142/17 on the northerly side of Pleasant Street, approximately 50 feet northeasterly from the intersection with Putnam Court with below-grade conductors. In contractor-provided conduits traversing under roadway into Putnam Court. On Putnam Court, place below-grade conductors and contractor-provided conduits, beginning on the easterly side of Putnam Court as it intersects with Pleasant Street, traversing approximately 275 feet along the easterly side of Putnam Court before crossing onto private property. Reason is part of the East Hampton Mills renovation project. Wherefore, they pray, after due notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint or identical locations for and permission to construct and maintain a line of poles, wires, and cables together with such sustaining and protecting features, fixtures, as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the field plan herewith and made a part hereof, marked 68420046DXO. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
Thank you. Second. Okay, we have a motion of second for the replacement of the pole location. Any additional comments or discussion? None seen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Move the public hearings to be closed.
Second.
A motion of second to close public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. I believe, Counselor Hagan, you have a few more items?
Yeah, just to get back to the standing report on finance, as was done earlier in the meeting, we did set public hearings for the retained earnings to stabilization and the $185,000 for the arbitrated contracts, and those will be on the April 2nd meeting. In conjunction with that, there will be, our next meeting will be held on, actually a different date than normal, Monday, March 24th, at 6:00 PM in a room to be determined by the assistant clerk. And at that time, we're going to take up again the arbitration. We did get some tentative and talk with both the mayor and Human Resources, and also the union on the fire contract, and also Director Pipczynski is going to be there, along with some engineers, on the bonding and borrowing for the integrated management. The final item tonight that we'd like to take up is a request made by the superintendent of schools. She appeared before us a couple of meetings ago in reference to Whitebrook Middle School and a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority for repairs to that school. And at that time, there was also a request for at least a submitting of the statement of interest by the city or by the school department to the Mass School Building Authority on all of the elementary schools. Again, as the superintendent appeared at the subcommittee, and as she appeared at our meeting, this, these in no way bind the city to any financial commitment. It also doesn't bind the state to any financial commitment. It's just a procedural step that it has to be taken if down the line this is going to be done. So with council approval, we have three motions tonight. Each one of the elementary schools has to be done in a separate motion. So I will start with the first one, and that would be for Center Street School. And the motion reads as follows: Having convened in an open meeting on March 19th, 2014, prior to the closing date, the city council of East Hampton, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form prior to April 11th, 2014, SOI deadline for the Center Street located at Nine School Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts Building Authority in the future replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional, school, district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second stating of the statement of interest for the Center Street School. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
I'd like to turn it over to Counselor Riss for our second motion.
This is a motion concerning Pepin School. Having convened in an open meeting on March 19th, 2014, prior to the closing date, the city council of East Hampton, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form prior to the April 11th, 2014 SOI deadline for the Pepin School located at Four Park Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional, school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second to support the statement of interest for the Pepin School. Any additional discussions or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And finally, Counselor Kuzinski on Maple School.
This motion has to do with the Maple Street School. Having convened in an open meeting on March 19th, 2014, prior to the closing date, the city council of East Hampton, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form prior to the April 11th, 2014 SOI deadline for the Maple School located at Seven Chapel Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for the full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional, school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second in support of the statement of interest for the Maple Street School. Any additional discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
That concludes finance.
Thank you very much, and I believe we've gone...
Counselor... I just wanted to let you know that Mary Ann says that we can have the meeting in room one.
Room one.
And I want to thank the finance committee for changing the date. It's specifically because of my work commitment, so thank you very much.
Thank you, room one. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
No one wants to leave? Is there a second?
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.